Where are you at?
He's going to do our prayer for us.
Amen.
I apologize. Bill Holmes had me.
Would you do our opening prayer for us?
Your heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to travel here safely this morning to do the people's business. We ask that you provide us with wisdom and guidance in this meeting. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, we've got a pretty short agenda, but with some of this time sensitive. So we'll start with Kevin. The consent agenda is item number one under Chancellor Clerk. Do we have a motion to appeal to the claim of stoppage? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item two, order authorizing Liz Tebley, VOS administrative assistant, to participate and volunteer at the MAS annual convention from June thirteenth through the eighteenth. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Under discussion, if they need some more volunteers or could we make it just volunteers opposed to just Liz? Anybody else wants to participate?
Yeah, what you do, you want to amend that to just county volunteers?
County volunteers, please.
Okay, so authorizing.
I make amendment.
County volunteers. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item three, order authorizing an exemption from county after-labor taxes excluding school district taxes pursuant to Mississippi Code seventeen twenty-one seven as amended, based on the increase in assessment of the renovation of existing facilities as hotel legends located at six seven four Beach Boulevard, Biloxi, in the second judicial district of Harrison County and identified as parcel number one four one zero K zero one zero six six dot zero zero zero. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item four, order authorizing an improvement grant application to the state of Mississippi Department of Insurance Division of Fire Service Development for rural fire truck acquisition assistance. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Chief Sullivan, you want to say?
Only about seventy thousand, I think.
Yes ma'am, this is part of our overall program of trying to increase fire protection in Harrison County. We have the opportunity to ask the state, there is a rural fire truck grant. We're asking the state for whatever they can provide, which is a ninety thousand dollar grant, I believe is what the max is. And this is in conjunction with some other stuff that we're doing, that's a master plan. That, so we have to come before you and ask for your support in this to the state, and that's where we're at with this.
But how much is the fire truck?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, two thirty, two forty.
That's about a couple of wheels.
Yeah, that's going to help though. Every dime that we can get from somewhere else, we're going to take it because we could use it.
There was some money that was supposed to go, three million dollars really, it was supposed to come to the coast up to Harrison County for a fire station. And it was, you know, it got lost somewhere, didn't make it down here, now we're not going to get that. Do you know how we're doing on that, or?
No ma'am, we're still working on it, I should say.
Okay.
I'll just leave it at that. You know how these things work is that there's so much, it's like the iceberg. We're looking at the tip now, but there's so much you have to do, work underneath that you have to do, and that's what we're doing right now, trying to see where some funding is and all that money is.
We've sent several letters to the.
Yes ma'am, all the powers that will be are working on it, and we're going to keep working on it, we're not going to stop working on it. Try to get everything in place so that when it, when it does come together, it's going to come together quickly, and we're going to be able to pull the, the trigger on it and get more fire protection in Harrison County.
Thank you so much.
Reverend.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item five, I could discuss the budget for the jail improvements, but I'd like to ask the sheriff, I know he's almost completed his improvements, but there is a matter of his training facility. So why you need some more money for the improvements, you really need money for the training facility?
We're not, as far as the jail goes, I think we're covered. We have, with the budget that y'all gave me, we basically put a line list together and went through them, the ones that needed to be done immediately. So we fixed all that. Now we're back on a line item that, that are things that are needed, but not necessarily wanted. So we'll, we'll spend the full amount, maybe some, maybe just short of it, but what me and Ms. Martin talked about last week was is that if there's, if there's more money that can be put into this bond, where I need it is, is a training academy versus a jail. The match we still have to come up with, which if we have to, we can, we can figure out something, but that's where I would need it right now.
So the reason this was prompted, you know, at the last meeting we discussed, doing a bond with Mr. Pittman, because money's pretty cheap right now, the interest rates probably never going to get lower. So I reached out to the sheriff to see if he needed, I know he had told us an original amount, but if, if we can do a bond and help him with his facility for less money than it would have cost us to do the lesser amount three years ago, then why wouldn't we consider it? So that's kind of where it was on that.
Another thing that I don't think people realize that Sheriff may be realizing, it's going to be such an awesome training facility that officers and law enforcement from across the state and even Louisiana maybe can come use this state-of-the-art training center, and we'll actually get a little subsidy back for it, we'll get paid for it. So it's a good thing.
We'll make, we'll make money with it, but, but having a training academy, you're not in business to make money.
I know, but it's a bonus.
All you're trying to do is cover your expenses, and, and we've covered our expenses every year. With this new one, we shouldn't be over, over that. Because we'll have, we'll have officers from Alabama, from Louisiana, you know, we had, we just had a class last year, we had them down from New York. So once we get this facility built, it will be an all-inclusive facility.
Good. And right now you're having to pay the junior college, right? For some, or?
We're paying, well no, they, they, we're not paying them. They, there's a lot of logistical things that they do for us, plus our, our policies and files they maintain. So it's, it's better in, in, when you have legal action for them to contact the junior college to get training records and things like that. So they, they maintain that, but we do split profit with them at the end of the year. But we do pay the assembly, the Christmas, I mean the Methodist assembly now for using the facility.
So that would eliminate that expense.
That would eliminate that cost.
Hey, is our, our bond that we have, is that strictly for roads?
It's very loose, roads, buildings, parking garages, parking lots, pretty much whatever. But here was the deal.
Those bond documents are generally written to cover most, anything we need.
So if we have some extra.
Probably that includes construction, those types of things, parking lot, those things like that, yeah.
So if we have some extra, we could maybe help the sheriff too.
Right, but see, we could do a new bond, which brings me to the next item, and cover some of the stuff that we've been talking about for four, five years. And maybe this ball roll it, so, which brings me to item number six.
Done anything yet though? While we're talking about.
Discussing before with the new building for code engineers zoning and planning. And we probably need to look at doing some RFPs for a builder and design. We can't, we have a design on this, but it was larger than we needed, and it's also about three years old. So we probably need to look at getting a better cost estimate.
Might want to consider too, in our original discussions, including the tax, uh, tax collector's office in there as well.
Right now you're paying what?
Connie brought that up early on.
Fifteen hundred a month, I did.
So she's paying fifteen hundred a month right now to the school board. So could, so you could then contribute fifteen hundred dollars a month for some space out here too, correct?
We, we talked about a drive-through, would that be possible, so you could, they could drive through it?
Um, drive-through for the disabled man for tagrinals only, yes.
And then, so we'd have to make sure that was in the design, because that's what I was thinking of.
We have an architect community here, they talk to each, hit department head to get, you know, specific designs that would accommodate their apartment.
Now we had LPK.
That's the only way we do it.
We have LPK's proposal already, and he did in fact talk to, but I think he included a casserole collector, several of them. So do y'all want to go back with him, or do you want to? We've already got some preliminaries work done by this particular guy.
Who, who does that?
What's his name?
Uh, Johnny Olson.
The design was.
Johnny.
Oh, Appleton.
Quite expensive.
Olson.
Olson, okay.
The sound being.
But now that we've identified.
But I would suggest that we, you know, I, I know we primarily hired him because of the road department.
Correct.
We're considering building the road department. I don't know if just each department head can contribute, as to the need, who's going to do the design work?
Well, that's what we need to talk about.
We designed it already.
But here's the deal, we, we finally identified a parcel of property, which is the next item on the agenda. So we really kind of need to probably start over on the design work, so it'll fit into this parcel.
Let's just do. Do you start over, or do you just add to what you already have, or adjust what we already have?
Or ju, whatever y'all want to do.
Let's just do that, because we already paid, paid him some.
So y'all want to just go back to him and just ask him to adjust and make it fit on this parcel property?
Yeah.
And cut down some of the space for the tax collector, because at that time it was a lot bigger.
Yeah.
And Sharon, you mentioned drive-through just for the disabled, wouldn't it be nice to let anybody drive through?
Antigrinals, tagrinals, you can't just go in there with something new, because you could be there thirty minutes trying to do something, so.
Too, I couldn't just go pay my property taxes.
Property tax, tagrinals.
So property tax, tagrinals.
Criminal license, well of course they would be right next door, but if they just wanted a renewed one, they could do that. And for anybody that would, you know, make it easier for them to have to get in and out.
Wouldn't it be possible to do two lanes like a bank does?
I wouldn't.
Okay.
It's just a thought, because I know how long I, I've in the past waited to pay taxes.
Because see, Community Bank's got this bank over here, that they're building a new one. So their old bank is very small, but it's already set up for perfect drive-through.
Smart.
But I saw.
Where is it?
It's one block over, you know, the new one's right across the street.
Okay.
And then one block over, it's in a little B, and it's a small branch, but it has the drive-through already set up. So you might want to look at that as well, or I'll be happy to talk to him and see.
Yeah.
If that may help you, unless, because this, the property we're looking at is on Seaway Road. So that's kind of dynamics, but, okay, so I need a motion and to continue with our people that we have, do we have a second? I just have them go back to, mainly to Ms. Nash, because he's already spoken to code engineers zoning and planning. So if you'll get with him.
Yes ma'am.
But he's going to have to design it to fit this parcel of land, assuming we pass that. So all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, which brings me to item seven. Order directing the Harrison County Development Commission to remove certain real property located in the Bayou Bernard Industrial District from its list of properties available for sale and development, and directing the Harrison County Development Commission to acknowledge, receive, and direct to the county. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
I was just going to say, we've been working with Tim and Jackie and Patrick, so all the things that all y'all just talked about all fit on this site, and we've been working on that for quite a while.
Also have to have big trucks, big contractors come in with trailers and that kind of.
There's plenty of room for growth and drive-throughs and all the things, and we've already been working on site plans with Johnny and, and everybody, so.
So we need, before we jump the gun here, we got to get Sharon's input on.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be the smaller version that was on there, but give us what you need.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
I hate to put a rush job on it, but whenever you can get with them, the quicker the better, because we've been dealing with this.
Yeah, it's time we get going.
Three years.
We want to get this bond.
We ready to go with it.
We are too, our office is very inconvenient.
And you're paying rent, you might as well help contribute to the.
Yes ma'am.
County-owned building, so potentially be paid off, so.
Right. What do you mean, her fifteen hundred dollars pay off what?
She's paying, that's what she's paying in rent right now.
To the office in Dito, that's our D to get to.
What, what are you saying, I, I didn't.
I mean, as opposed to pay fifteen hundred dollars a month rent, we can have our own building.
Yeah.
And if she wants to help contribute towards that, or to furnish it, or whatever.
Well, she has contributed toward that, it's a part of our budget. We're going to have to appropriate funds for it.
She's going to need to furnish it though, and that's not part of it. You know, there's.
Well, I would include all that in the bond, that's ridiculous.
There's certain amount of money for.
You include, you include the total cost in the bond, and, and if you require her to, in her budget, to pay fifteen hundred dollars to defer bond costs, we're going to have to appropriate it, what's the difference?
Excuse me, if, if you tell me if I'm wrong, there's some added, added tax for computers and things like that, or not tax, but it's deferred. Maybe you know that, Ms. Nash, that allows the, that's giving extra money to the tax collector, so that they can add and upgrade technology and things like that, that could be used.
But here's my point, according to Mr. Pittman, I'm sorry I didn't get him to come down, he says that whatever the bond money spent on has to last for the life of the bond, so that's why I was thinking furnishing. That probably wouldn't last twenty years, but, I mean, that's fine, we thought we had there, but just on the safe side.
Well, let's look for that money.
Be prepared.
I think it's in, it's already in there.
But I know he said, he told me we could spend it on something that didn't last as long as the bond.
I know, but this, this is not bond money, this, I'm talking with.
Yeah.
I'm talking about computers, and then she has to have countertops for the.
Yeah, I didn't mean for her to pay us rent, I meant paying fifteen hundred.
We're going to be saving fifteen hundred dollars.
We're going to be saving, so we might as well put that towards.
That goes into a general fund, and of course we're going to have to pay.
So that fifteen hundred can go towards this.
Basically save fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, no, because we're paying it already.
I don't know what the cost of that thing goes for, at reference to the building or zoning.
We're paying there too.
We're paying that sixteen section lease, so that, we're not.
Pam, how much is that?
Sixteen section lease, so that's part of.
Planting, zoning, and we're paying them too, but see, if we take the fifteen hundred, we're paying for this, and whatever we're paying for that.
There is savings, there are savings, yeah, long-term.
And that will pay the bond payment, I mean, you know, really, to me it's a lot better to own something than it is to rent.
Now it's time to do it.
They'll let us out of the lease, because I know on code, you have a long lease with the school, they'll let us out?
I think Tricia said it was month to month.
It just goes back to.
You let us out?
Okay.
The school, it just goes back to the school, they can do whatever with it, the building comes as a property.
Might be more valuable this, for them to sell it.
They might have to knock it down.
They can't sell it, is my humble opinion.
They're probably going to pay somebody to remove it.
Lease it to somebody.
You may have to remove it for them.
Or lease it to someone else.
Or knock it down.
Okay, there's one more item that I was asked to bring up, that is a question on executive session. So I'm assuming, tell me, remind me how to do this, Supervisor Blackner, do we need to go into closed session to discuss?
If there's an issue with whether we need to go in executive session, I suggest we go into closed session and discuss it.
Okay, motion to go into closed session.
Second.
You don't need to second it, but that's.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Yep, I have it.
Okay, we're in closed session. Any motion carries, or our council, liberal board, on executive session? Okay, is there any other business before the Supervisor Blackner, Jones?
Take care of that.
Just one quick thing is, did we discuss the flooding? You know, we talked about that we didn't take into, we weren't supposed to take into consideration, but two things. And that is change in the.
Change in?
Change in the characteristics.
Change in the character of the neighborhood, and one other thing, we can't take into consideration flooding, traffic, or any of those other things.
Can we do, can we change on this thing?
Flood will be difficult. Uh, you can, I think.
Flooding will be hard, because everything's flooded this weekend.
Flood will be difficult, yeah, it's just going to be difficult to design one that applies to the entire county.
Yeah, but you come up with something, we'll put it on the agenda.
Well, what?
But, you know, generally, I'm not so, in my opinion, if you have a change in character of the neighborhood, flooding could be part of the consideration.
So we can consider.
I mean, we just have.
Well, you consider it now, they do flood point, they make required.
They're arguing, that, that, see, applicants that we deny, the argument is that that's taken care of through the permit process.
So if there's any flooding or adverse to the neighbors and anything, that should be handled at the permit process.
But that comes back on the county, and Brandon, Mississippi.
Do they?
I think Brandon got sued by a neighborhood and won recently over drainage.
And are the planning commissioners, are they subject to the bear with Martin rule, or are we stuck with them?
The what now?
The what?
What's the bear with Martin rule?
Bear with Martin rule, service at the wheel and pleasure.
Right, right, well, what she's talking about is that.
Certain wheel and pleasure.
At the wheel, they, they're the only commission that serves at the wheel and play at any time with this board of supervisors.
So planning's not.
For example, if you have trouble with another committee, you couldn't remove them until their term is served.
Apparently, they serve out their term unless you, there are grounds to remove somebody from all of them, because they're very limited.
But we could ask somebody to.
You can ask them, they might not do it.
I can ask her appointing to.
There is something, though, that I, if you come back, if you don't mind.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Connie brought the issue of flooding. There is an issue kind of, and, and it's a very difficult issue, but you're going to have some folks coming before you complaining about these short-term rentals. And what's happening is, what they're complaining about, and I kind of understand the argument, they, they live in a residential area, but there, there's a business going on right next to them, and it's disturbing them. So I don't know, Tim, you know, how we deal with that, that's a problem.
That's a problem.
I don't, I know of two places in my district, I don't know, there might be some in other places, nobody's saying anything about it.
But it's an issue, but here's the issue, what Patrick came up with was limiting the number of overnight guests. Well, that don't really count unless they're family.
It depends on.
Because they're going to say, if you got a twelve-bedroom house and you got a limit of ten people, or if you got a three-bedroom house and all ten people are family, then what? You know, so that doesn't work.
It's almost, it makes it, no, I did pull out, we pulled some sort of ordinance, so the different areas to start looking at them. It's a problem, because again, you have to apply county-wide.
That's the issue.
And that becomes a, a real difficult thing to try to design it where it's applicable to the areas where it's more concentrated. And we may be able to figure that out, that's, that's the only thing I can address.
But the gentleman, that Supervisor Blackner, wanted to, is on, I'm sorry, there's a gentleman coming to the.
There's a couple up, should be a couple up.
Well, I got one name so far, but he was coming.
Yeah.
And he was from that Henderson Point area, to talk about it, but I checked into that, and they have an HOA there, Mike could do something.
Well, you see, and Tim, and that ordinance y'all sent him, it does say that the, the city, the council, city council, or the commission, I couldn't tell whether the commission was involved or whether the city council was, but if an HOA or was involved, and they were not allowed, then they were not allowed.
Because see, that, where I live, they actually did that, the HOAs did, you can't use.
You can't use.
Most of the times, HOAs, covenants do limit that, but most of the time, the problem is these HOAs are there, they're not, they're not working.
Well, this one's pretty active, because I could.
The left.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're pretty active.
Some of them are neighborhood.
But they could come up with that rule.
These guys are really, these are neighbors of the people who are short-term rental. They're, they're close together, the homes are lots of relatively small, and they coming in, you know, and most of these people are like tourists, and so they're not going to go to bed at eight o'clock at night, they're out in casinos around, and they're coming in and making noise and slamming doors. And, and like the guy said, this is a residential area, I shouldn't have to put up with a business next to me.
He might have some neighbors that might.
Business next to me.
But Danny, he's got a neighbor called, that's building the house for that specific purpose.
For that purpose, yeah.
That wants to have, and I can't think of her name now, but that's kind of what she's planning on doing, is using it for sure.
Yeah, now you're, I'm talking about another, you're talking about the one that hit us a point, I'm talking about another one on Arcadia Farm Road.
Oh, okay.
And once this gets kind of out, I think y'all are going to find out care others as well.
It's hard, unfortunately, we are trying to go on the beach, you have minimum thirty days' rental to try to cut down on that, especially the kids. We were all kids once, and we were as much a pain as they are today.
That's right.
And so we have one condo that constantly has people coming in and out, and it's obviously not for thirty days. And of course, what happens is, she claims that members of her church, so if you ask these people, they're renting it.
Yeah.
So most of them are nice, I mean, one day they set up a crawfish bowl out in the yard, and I went down there and talked to them, they're all from Louisiana, heavy and cagey, they were nice, they could be. I was a little bit shocked at the crawfish bowl going on.
It's just not a simple fee.
And another thing, I'm not all for passing a county-wide ordinance for two or three people.
Right, there's some places.
It's like taking a shotgun and killing half, and that didn't make any sense. But on the other hand, I, I, it's too bad we couldn't have dealt with, and maybe, I, I, of course, I wasn't going to tell them, no, I said this, but maybe the best way to deal with it through zoning.
The only thing bad about zoning is, you know, zoning law, if anything exists at the time you adopt it, it's grandfathered.
That's why I don't want to know what I'm saying. Because that would be applicable to the ones who are really making the complaint right now.
You can do a general ordinance that might, won't be zoning, that would apply to everybody, and that, that was probably the way we ought to go if you're going to do it. But let's just, we're gathering statutes.
Okay. I don't know how y'all feel about it, and I want, because if you're not in support of even looking at it, let us know, because I don't want to waste Tim's time.
I don't, I, it'd be hard for me, Martin, I'm going to be honest with you, to support that. Only because of what you said just a while ago, I don't want to make a county-wide ordinance for two or three ants.
Well, maybe, let's do this, maybe when they come, and the media reports, maybe you'll start, we'll find out if there's.
I hope people really feel. All right, speaking of media, Jeff is gone, we need to replace them, especially in light of this tourism stuff, and then our tourism season's starting. Have we posted that?
Not that I don't know, I'll get with.
Okay, so we need to ask them, ask that.
I think she sent y'all the job description, and Jeff, the job description.
She didn't, well, yeah, she's standing, I respond back, but. In the meantime, we don't.
Well, I will tell you.
Well, it looks like, no, Kim was not in news, we need a news person, that's why.
Or we need a PR person.
Well, I, well, I know, but I'm telling you, I've been in news, I've been in PR, I've been in a media company, person, PIO needs to have.
But, but, but it's not, what we had to discuss, I know this is maybe not the time, but the person that we hire, at the end of the day, still answers to us. So whatever he does goes through us, so it's kind of hard for him to do his or her job, the way we think they should do it, if they constantly answer to people. That's the difference, they constantly answer to each individual, that makes it difficult. We need to let him know what his job description is, and allow him to do his job.
Right.
Well, I can tell you what the EOC does, unless they've changed, is they ran their press releases through their county administrator and board president. So I don't know that they showed all y'all everything.
Was that EOC?
That's fine.
Back when Rupert was there.
I don't know that stuff. Also, on, on, on the new positions also, we're going to have to consider salary, because what, what we don't want to do is just be a training ground. That's what a lot of police departments and so forth are getting involved with, they're just a training ground for a low salary, and that person gets in after a year and gone, that's what I'm saying. We're training, we're just a training ground.
That paid pretty good.
We started him at, we, we made him at forty-two, and he got the four percent rate.
What I'm saying, we, that was a training ground, if he was ever going to somewhere else, I mean, we, we get someone, we kind of want him to stay around a while.
Well, I'll just say what I already told Emily, y'all all heard of Kate McGanney, she was a sports editor, she was an editor at Sun Herald, she's highly respected. She got a job at XXV after the Sun Herald, you know, laid off everyone, and XXV is so dumb that they made her a salesperson, because she's so connected. But she's a brilliant, she could have been a Simon editor, even news director. She's making such low pay and working in sales that she doesn't like, that she told me she would definitely consider working for us, I'm just putting it out there.
We need to post a job and see who else is interested in it.
Of course, I've called three anchors, they're all like, forty-two.
We just posted it.
I think that there's a balance, that, that they have to recognize too, that likely to not be a political body, listen, I, I probably, it, it doesn't make me.
Absolutely.
I'd be interested in being a part of it.
Putting anything out.
You're a political body, and they need to be cognizant of that, and represent us in that respect as well as.
And you need maturity, she's a fifty-five-year-old woman, understands that.
That's right.
Big difference.
But see, I've got a problem, I mean, I want to know if somebody, I don't want anybody speaking on my behalf, because I ran for this office. I'm the one that knocked on doors and put those signs out at one hundred and ten degree in July, so I deserved. I'm the one that knocked on doors and put those signs out at a hundred and ten degrees, so I deserve that. I'm gonna speak for myself, the public put me in here, and I, they're gonna hear from me. That's the way I see it.
What's your priority?
But you know, if we got a public, the public information person is-
Two years ago, out of Jackson County, I don't know, remember who the person was? Who, they were good.
She was a reporter at WLF, that's what I'm telling you, you gotta understand it.
If there was an issue in a particular, uh, district, supervisor's district, for example, she, it might be a road issue, well, she made sure that number one, the road person spoke, but she also made sure that the supervisor in that district spoke as well.
Right.
So, it was a balance between information and having that supervisor also communicate, like Beverly's talking about, to her, or his constituents.
Just give me the talking points.
It just, it's common sense type thing, too.
Okay, so. Also understanding how they work too, like, I'll tell you, if it's something we want them to know about, we do it on a Monday. If it's something we don't want the public to really know about, we do it on a Friday, because they have longer commercial breaks. There's so many nuances that I'm not gonna bore y'all with, but you guys just need you to understand, it's got to be a news person.
That's right.
Okay, uh, got anything else?
No.
Ms. Solomon?
Nope.
Pam? Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
One, one quick thing before we go, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and post that position? Make sure it's clear, yeah, okay.
Need to post the one for town.
Second.
Second.
We don't, we, wait a minute, this is disrespectful. I, I actually asked Pam to hold off on that for a couple of weeks.
It's working out okay right now.
So we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?